Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks for coming out tonight. This is our June 10th meeting at 7:36 and we are called to order. Please rise and fledge of life. Thank you, everyone. Angela, real call, please.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan. Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Saba Alzayed.
I'm here. Thank you. Mr. Bello.
Madam President, we were in executive session from approximately seven o'clock to approximately 7:35 with regard to real estate matters as well as personnel.
Thank you so much. All right. First up here for council consideration, we have approval of May 13th, 2025, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion from Ms. Hauck, a second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to my update. Really quick, want to give a shout out to the River Market crew. We had a great turnout this past Sunday on Frosty Falls Day. Laura did a fantastic job, obviously, with the many activities. We had at least a couple hundred people come through. Personally, at our station, we served, I think, 168 children painting rocks and putting together a whole bunch of activities. It's really fun to meet all of our neighbors. I really enjoyed spending time with everyone and hope to see you soon. Just a reminder that we have free kids' activities at the River Market, the second and fourth Sunday of every month, and we're looking forward to meeting you there. And the next thought I had was wanted to give another shout out to the principal, Mr. B., from Bertrand Elementary. He is retiring really sadly. Just want to thank him for being such a great community partner and a lot more than just a principal. I think he's, you know, affected a lot of people's lives that have gone through that school. I've never heard one bad thing about him. It's been nothing but raving reviews. And personally, I could say that I've experienced that with my own children. Even when I go have meetings with him, I'll walk in with, you know, as young as a two-year-old, and he'll sit him on the floor, give him a bunch of toys, play with them while he's meeting with me. And that just sets a tone for the kind of school that he provides. And I think that he will be sorely missed by, you know, council, the community, and Bridgeport and all the kids. So wishing him well in his next roles and, you know, happy retirement.
Just to be clear, he's not retiring. He's just moving to another position.
Oh, that's an odd way of putting it.
All right. So next up here, we have, for council consideration, a request from Growing Bridgeport Together to use the Borough parking lot for an annual holiday village event November 29th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do, pardon me. I don't know if Mr. Gundrum is here, if anybody had any questions.
I rescind my so moved until Mr. Gundrum.
You can open the floor with a, well, you can open the floor with a motion that we can discuss. So, motion by Mr. Shank, and we can, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Amy. While he is setting up, I will recuse from this because of my position on Growing Bridgeport Together and keep.
Thank you, Diane. Welcome, John.
John Gundrum, Growing Bridgeport Together. Thank you for considering this. This is our, basically, our standard request. We do plan to install a four-by-six vinyl banner out front like we usually do on the sidewalk, advertising it two weeks, maybe three weeks before, when we get it, maybe. And we will also be getting a 20-by-40 tent to be set up in the lot for all the kids' activities. That'll be done the Friday before the event and would be picked up on Monday, as per usual. And then also, we put out a request for Public Works to hang the lights within that tent for the event. And the Girl Scouts run it, they, every year. I do have to make the request to them. So they're usually very, very enthusiastic about doing it. So I would expect that they would do it again. And that's it for that, pretty much. And I think the only other thing would be, any site lights that we would set up, we would remove, I think it was like two weeks after or so, or later, depending on a consensus whether or not, you know, we're good through the holidays. I mean, they are holiday lights. So if we're good through till January, that'd be fine. And maybe that's a question for the Borough Manager to clarify if that's a okay thing.
That will be fine, yes.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gundrum? We had two motions. Any questions or comments from the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gundrum.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our zoning hearing notice for 25 Ford Street, June 23rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. You're welcome to come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is George Ezra Oski. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. We were actually scheduled before the zoning hearing board in May. We actually asked if it could be continued because I understood that council had some questions about the application. And now, obviously, we want to be good neighbors to the people in Bridgeport. So we thought, hey, let's come back, make sure council understands what we're doing, what we're proposing to do, answer any questions that you might have, and then we plan on going back to the zoning hearing board on June 23rd. Big picture, the property, as you may know, actually has two fronts. One of it's on Ford Street, and the other one is on Fourth Avenue, Fourth Street. The side that's on Ford Street, my client who sent me down, he's here. He, Sammy, is actually the supervisor of the Temple Sleep Study. And his desire was, and the reason why he bought the property was, he would like to open up a private sleep study clinic here in the borough. And he would like that portion of the building on Ford Street to be used as a sleep study clinic. So what that involves is basically two rooms where people would sleep in and one technician. And that's if it's going really well. I mean, there could be no patients any night. They would come in, it's usually 7:30 at night to 7:30 in the morning, usually no more than five days a week. But that's, again, driven by how many patients you actually have. So it was intent to use the front part of that building on that street for that side, on the first floor. On the first floor and the other side, he was proposing or thinking of putting in a restaurant there. Not necessarily himself. He would probably just do a vanilla box. If you looked in the inside of the building, there's pictures of it, it's pretty rough. And it needs a lot of work to be done to make it, you know, workable and habitable. So he does not have a tenant yet. He was, you know, he could probably just do, as I said, a vanilla box and spec it out, let whoever leases the property do what they want to do as far as whether it's going to be a breakfast place or, you know, dinner place, lunch dinner. We just don't know at this point what it would be. But we thought, again, this was a be amenity to the community, like the sleep study would be. Then the third floor, or the second floor, excuse me, would just be a two-bedroom apartment. It's a fourth, over 4,000 square foot building. It's just big. And there's really no, you know, the restaurant won't spill into the second floor. He doesn't need that much space for the, for a sleep study on the first floor. So we're just trying to make some type of reasonable use of it. It'll be over 2,000, excuse me, over 1,000 square feet, which is required by code. So that's kind of a big picture, what we would do for the three uses. Sammy, you can probably explain a little bit more about the sleep study.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Speaking there. My name is Sammy. I work in Temple Hospital. We run a sleep center there. Before, I used to work in Edison. We used to run private sleep center. So private sleep center, they provide care with less cost for patient. So nowadays, you know, many of the people, they don't have the insurance that cover the service 100%. So to run a sleep center, a study in a sleep center in a hospital, probably going to cost about $2,000 versus about $600 or $700 to do it in a private sleep center. So there is many patient, they struggle with the bill. There is many patient also, they refuse to do the study because the cost is expensive for them. So when I bought this building, I was thinking about why not to open a private sleep center in the area. It used to be one emblemous meeting and they closed. So there is no private sleep center all over the place. So what we do with a patient, it's the same requirement as a hospital. I work in both. So the patient come to the sleep center in the evening to stay overnight, to monitor their sleep and their breathing, to diagnose the sleep apnea. There is other things can be diagnosed from the sleep studies, but mostly 95% of that diagnosis is sleep apnea, people who use a sleep apne machine. So it depend on the volume. It's a two-bedroom lab. It can work Monday to Sunday. That's if we have that much patient. It's hard to get in the patient to stay overnight in the sleep center because of the cost for the insurance. So most of the time, the alternative is to mail in a home sleep study to the patient, to do the job. So most of the time, you probably can have two, three nights. Patients stay overnight. Do patients who have like clinical health condition, maybe like heart disease or lung disease. It's better to be diagnosed in sleep center. Technician can watch them. And if there is any drop in the oxygen level or any other issues, we can be monitored. That's just the clinical part. So it, most of the time, I don't need more than that small space for two-bedroom. And other services can be provided for the community more than providing the service at lower cost. People who get the CPAP machine, sometimes they get stuck. They get the machine in, they have the mask, they don't know how to use the mask, or they use a nasal mask and they probably need to be in a different mask style or the mask is small size. In the sleep center, we can provide a clinic for those patient to bring it or CPAP machine to look at it and provide them with a different mask style. So it's kind of providing, try to provide for the community good service. Or sometimes also it's hard to get in the hospital because they are poked maybe two, three months ahead. If you need to do the sleep study because of the job. For example, if you work in SEPTA and you need to get it for your job, you're probably going to wait in hospital for two, three months to get an appointment. Maybe if we have it here, that's could be faster. That's can part providing some help for the community around. So that's the general thing about the sleep studies that will be provided if you approve the sleep center here.
What's the, and thank you very much, maybe this is for Roger. What's the use in that building right now that it's, not zoning, but what was the grandfathered use that?
It used to be an upholstery building or upholstery shop, as I understand it.
So would that be, I mean, what is that under our zoning? Some kind of repair or retail or?
That would be a grandfather use to predate zoning.
I guess what I'm getting at is there's, so we're saying the ground floor commercial space, the sleep study thing sounds like a great fit because it's not going to be very, it's not going to be very taxing on the parking in the area. But the remainder of the commercial space, the restaurant idea would be a little more taxing on the parking, I think, to put it lightly. But what other commercial uses would be allowed by the grandfathered, what's grandfathered in that might be easier and less of a parking issue?
Yeah, I think this is in the neighborhood commercials. So there's a whole list of commercial uses that are permitted in there. The grandfathered in use was the upholstery shop that was there.
Would that have to be upholstery shop to continue with that use, or is there some category that falls under?
I mean, that can be considered somewhat of a general commercial. I mean, I don't know that that would be considered manufacturing necessarily. It would be more of a repair shop.
I guess what I'm getting at is, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. The uses are okay, except for the sleep study. The reason the sleep study is this kind of quirky because if you read your ordinance, it falls under the definition of a hospital because they're staying overnight. So that's why we need a zoning relief for the sleep study. The other relief is parking. They're all permitted uses except for the clinic.
I think what Kyle's getting at, though, is that it really is an intense amount of parking relief that's needed with all three uses involved. The residential, the sleep center, and a potential restaurant. So I think you're looking for a way that's not quite as intense as a restaurant would be. Obviously, depending on the number of seats or stools in the restaurant, that's going to drive the parking. That's going to drive problems on the street because there is no parking. Whereas the sleep center, you can kind of quantify it as three cars, right? And that's, and that's not invasive at all, or relatively not invasive, and certainly similar in traffic to what was there previously. But then you put the residential use on top of that, and you put a restaurant potentially on it. Is there something else that you could use that for where council doesn't have to be so concerned about that potential density?
That's exactly what I'm, what I'm getting. I think, you know, the restaurant, we discussed a bit. That block, we have a lot of residential units that don't have any off-street parking already that rely on street parking, and to add more units that would further, you know, put more pressure on what little street parking is there is tough, but I hate to see it sit empty. So just trying to help brainstorm what else, yeah.
By definition, you would need eight spots for the sleep study, which, you know, it's realistically three, if that. Because, you know, honestly, for the first, who knows how long it's going to get up to the point where you even have two patients there at one time, you know. So the, the restaurant is the nine spaces is the tough one. You know, the apartment's only two. But again, since we don't know who the end user of the restaurant is going to be, it's kind of tough. Now, if you say to me, George, can you, can you, and I would have to talk about this with my client, but can you just limit the relief to the sleep study and the apartments and then keep the general area and the bottom open until you figure out what that space is going to be? Is that something that council?
I have to talk to council about that. That's an interesting approach, and it would be one that I think would be helpful.
Because, you know, we don't, we really don't know what the space is. And we're not going to kid anybody, saying we just don't know. I mean, it could be any of the, any of the permitted uses in the district would be able to be used on that bottom floor there. And, you know, maybe you find another user with, you know, some other tent that.
And we are actively pursuing parcels for municipal parking in our, in our commercial corridor. That's, that's something we're working on. So it may not be too long from now where there may be some relief on public parking for, that we can take into consideration if we talk about this in a year. It's just that right now it's tough.
It's a recurring theme around town, the parking issue, and we love to see you develop, yeah. So you, we would love to see you develop a restaurant there, and we're not saying you can't, but it does put pressure on the parking. And I think that's the hardest of the three uses.
I'm actually more concerned about the sleeping than the restaurant part because with a restaurant, people come and go. And I know it's a different number of spots, but in theory, if you're sleeping, you're not moving your car during that time, right?
It's nighttime, but only two cars.
And I appreciate that, and I think.
Everyone is home at that time also.
I, right, I appreciate that, and I think, I think your intentions are very good. Of all the things you can offer to do, there's a positive thing. But you're, but I'm not confident in that staying at three. And I think that while it's not intensive for other things, when it's a medical-type place, I would not want to limit the parking. And honestly, I don't know, you may, it may only work really if you have adequate parking for something like that in case of a medical emergency or the kind of people that need it. Like, I imagine people that need a sleep study. There's people who have other medical needs. So I, I'm concerned about who needs to park well, and then their car is parked in a spot that's going to be staying there for hours, when other people in that area would desperately love us to give them relief. And then we're not just saying, well, we're giving this person relief, but also that car is going to sit there for eight to 10 hours, and it will be in multiple cars. And you say it might only be three spots, but, I mean, we're going to have two staff people there sometimes, even if it's not.
It's the way it's set up. If you look at the diagram, there's two rooms to sleep in and one person in the middle. You can't really get more than three.
You say that, but then you could have someone else that needs to be a trainee, someone else that, like, to pretend that you're never going to have another staff person there or someone helping, I think is naive. And as anyone knows, I'm the most lenient when it comes to parking probably here. And I'm the one that's, I have concerns about how I feel that that would be fair to the other businesses that are around there that also would love for us to give them relief. And I know that those spots would not be something that come and go, but that would be stationary for a while. So I wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes to that, even though I think the idea is great. It's just that location and the other residents, the businesses around there, I have a lot of concerns.
Just to answer your one concern, you can limit the number of beds and parking for that unit. So you can, if three was acceptable, you can say that at no time you'll accept as a condition, if the board was inclined to grant the application, that you can't have more than three vehicles that are attended to that site. So that addresses your one concern. But your other concern is the concern I wanted to talk about. And, and when you talk about hospitals, you talk about evacuation and emergency situations, emergency lanes. And George, I know you've had this in other municipalities, and certainly I have as well. And Upper Marine would be the best example. So that concerns me a little bit, but I don't know enough about your use to say how necessary that is. But it does occur to me that if you're like a hospital, those types of issues are always attended to a hospital use.
So it's a private sleep center, many hours patients, leave studies. It doesn't have to be part from sleep centers, I mean, part from hospitals. It doesn't have to be close to any hospital. And we always take, I mean, a healthy, not, I will not say 100% healthy patient, but they don't have any risk. Any patient like bedridden or need any help of transportation, they go directly to the hospital. So we don't take any patient in a private sleep center that really sick. If it's really sick, it's a risk to get them in a sleep center. They have to go to the hospital. Most of the patients who have a sleep apnea, they are young, a younger patient, healthy patient, unlikely to find, I mean, to get to private sleep center, very sick people. Usually, the referring physician will prefer to send them directly to hospital, not to a private sleep center.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think that for, you know, it's, I doubt, there's a ton of medical emergencies that are happening at a sleep center like this. I think it's rare. But I also know that a lot of people who need, who are looking into that may have obesity. They may have some trouble walking. So the kind of parking they need to make it fair for them, I'm just thinking about how that spot, we're, spots plural, is going to be. And you say you can limit the use, but that's not, I mean, it's easier said than done once it happens. So, you know, I can easily see that people who want to use it, like, I'm going to take my grandmother or my wife's going to drive me down there. Not this one, I would walk, but like, and someone else is going to drive there to help out or something to watch, help me get, like, I just don't feel comfortable saying three is adequate when I know that block area, and I just have a feeling of how people would use it based on past history. And also, am I concerned about being okay with granting a lot of leniency when other resident, other businesses around there would desperately love us to do that already, that have been good businesses?
Understood, but meanwhile, you have a vacant building for how long? And if there is no parking because the building's already built out, no matter what you put in there, it's going to have some type of parking problem because there's just no parking on site. You can't create it, you know, so it's.
Can you, over here, can you clarify the residential portion of that? Because you had mentioned in your presentation apartment singular, and the application has two.
No, no, we, that's, there was an amended application. At one point, there was an application where it was.
Okay, so now.
To the building. We're going to keep it in the existing footprint, the existing building, and just do a fit out on the second floor for one two-bedroom apartment.
And it meets the minimum size criteria. Okay, thank you.
We did that on purpose when we saw your letter.
Has there been any consideration for, like, on the Ford Street sign, like, knocking down that, like, back-end garage where it's, you know, we all know what it looks like. It's all kind of like grody and dilapidated. But like, instead of building in the existing footprint of that part, like utilizing that part as parking spots for the sleep study or the restaurant, like, seeing how many spots you could get on the property off the street that would probably alleviate. Have you looked into, sorry, have you, when you were developing your plans, has that come up at all?
To demolish a park and make it as a parking?
With a garage, where that yellow-looking garage is, create parking there. Did you look, did you look into that?
I mean, it, there is, under this space, there is a basement. So it's not like a, so you have to do the whole concrete thing to make it. So there is a part from the restaurant, it's a big space, taking most of the area. So I didn't think about that because it's unstable.
The cost, the cost about.
The cost.
Mr. Sammy, welcome to Bridgeport. Very excited to have new business in Bridgeport. We have to do our due diligence, so, you know, please be patient with us with all of our questions. I have a couple of thoughts for you. One, you're, when you jump into Bridgeport, you walk into a community, right? So we have a community here. We have a lot of great businesses. My thought with you is if your business runs at night, most of our businesses run through the day. So we have a fantastic group of businesses that are, we have a veterinary hospital, we have some chiropractors. I wonder if it's a matter of picking up the phone and saying, hey, could we have three of your spaces overnight? Four of your spaces overnight. Our patients can come park here overnight, and they can, you know, be serviced at our space. And that way, there's no parking that's needed in your space, just as a solution, even if, you know, temporarily for the time being. I'm not sure how that would work out. Obviously, I would refer to Mr. Bello and Mr. Truman to kind of finish off that conversation. But I feel like there might be some solutions, since you're very uniquely, very strictly at night, and you're not high-traffic, and it's only a couple of spots. We have lots of parking lots at night that are completely vacant, so I wonder if it's a matter of just a phone call. And I'm happy to facilitate that if that's interesting to you. In addition to that, something that we have not mentioned, and maybe Mr. Bello can help elaborate a bit on this. If you can't develop or create parking spaces from the ground up, which is obviously maybe the situation you're running into, we plan on, like Mr. Shank mentioned, building parking lots, ample parking. It's a part of our strategy. I think it's very important to grow businesses like yourself, and the only way we can do that is by parking lots. But although, you know, Mr. Truman tirelessly works on applying for grants, one thing that we do want to do is have some kind of private and public partnership. The way that we do that is you pay per parking spot. It's $2,000 per parking spot that's required. And that's kind of how we work with businesses that don't have parking, that would like to open larger-scale spaces. That way, we don't limit you in the growth that you'd like to have. But in addition to that, we're able to kind of grow the community around us, which is a win-win situation. Because you don't want to open a restaurant, like Mr. Bello constantly reminds us, and I think it's really a great, I'm not saying that sarcastically. I'm saying it with a perspective that I did not know about, considering his experience. I didn't think about, you know, if you don't have parking, you don't have business, right? So that's a very serious situation, and we've seen town on town where I stopped going to the towns because I can't find parking, and I'm not dragging my three-year-old around trying to find parking. So not to make this too long for you, but that is an option for you. If you're tired of talking about parking and you just want to, you know, stop the conversation and help grow Bridgeport also, that's something that is an option. Again, I'll let the professionals speak to that. But these are my two thoughts on the matter. Just wanted to welcome you and excited that you're here as well.
And just for council, I'm sorry, just for council's knowledge, based on the original application, it was a demand of 21 spaces. If they're reducing the apartment by one, then it'll knock it down by one. So we're looking at 20 spaces.
That's correct. Under the way the zoning is now, based on the size of the restaurant, the two spots for the one apartment and the.
Eight spots?
Eight spots for the sleep study.
We've historically, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we've historically, when it comes to residential, any kind of new residential, we've been pretty firm that if there's new residential, we need to park the residential when folks come in and ask these questions. I, just because there's neighbors there that utilize that street parking already, I have a hard time with the residential not being parked out. But when it comes to the sleep center and the commercial stuff, I think there's a lot of options. But man, adding residential without parking on that block where we'd have people in here screaming at us that already rely on that, that's where I'm at with it, but.
Does it currently have?
Here, everybody else.
Are there no apartments currently? Just the upholstery?
No, 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 it's all, yeah, I one time thought the second floor was an apartment, but I was corrected. It was always, they used the whole, the whole space, all 4,000 square feet.
So we can either grant a variance, take no action, or say no, or we do nothing.
We are not the zoning hearing board. We can support the application, oppose the application, or do nothing.
Right.
But, you know, we're not great.
We don't grant at this level.
I mean, but we can take no action or we can recommend in one way or another. And I think that, like, we've had a lot of people come here for business development of some sort, and I think that your intentions and ideas are very positive. So of all the people who could come here, I'd rather listen to your ideas than some others in general that I've heard. But if you're asking for me to tell our zoning hearing board that I want them to do something affirmative, I can't do that right now. It's just, because I'm thinking about the accessibility needs that I would feel comfortable with, with that use, and the residential apartment and how it's going to be used, and then considering the other businesses in that area that will be affected because they'll want to do it as well, and we'll have to tell them, well, we already gave it to this owner. So I, at this point, the best I can do is take no action.
Do you guys have any thoughts about anything that we've said tonight in terms of, I guess, I was chatting with Mr. Bello. If we'd like our support, I think we can work something out in terms of stipulations, maybe. Like, do we have some thoughts? You have some thoughts? And kind of come to the middle. I'd be happy to see new businesses in Bridgeport and would like to support, but I'd love to hear your thoughts.
And before you address that, I think Council President was making reference. And before you address that, I think Council President was making reference to fees in lieu of parking spaces, and if that's something you wanted to entertain, I certainly can't speak for council, but it's another thought that she threw out there for consideration. You're required to have 20 spaces, would you pay in lieu of those parking spaces, which I guess the theory is, the borough can accumulate these funds over time and buy municipal lots, which will benefit you and everyone else in the neighborhood.
Honestly, I'm not comfortable with that for this particular situation, I'm usually am, and I think it's a great idea in general, but, but I would not feel comfortable because it's residential and with sleeps, I, people will probably park early-ish in the night, they're not gonna get there at 1:00 in the morning, right?
Well, they can park them at somewhere else.
But I don't feel comfortable with that because some people who may using, I'm concerned with their accessibility needs, health needs in general, like, it's different than a coffee shop where people could walk there from wherever, it's different from a restaurant where people are gonna be walking far, like, it's, I want those people to be able to park safely and close by, and residential will be that too, so I wouldn't feel comfortable with a fee in lieu at this time.
Can I speak to him for a second? That's okay, I mean, I was just talking to my client, I mean, we're kind of what we would, I'm sorry, I don't want to talk over them. Oh, that's okay, I don't want to talk over you. I'm talking to my client, I mean, if the board was so inclined, I kind of like my idea of keeping the first floor open, that issue open, because, I mean, it may be some other use where you don't need, we won't need nearly as many spots as a restaurant, so, what we would oppose is that we would pay for the three spots for the sleep study and the two spots upstairs for the apartment, and then when we figure out what this first floor space is gonna be, readdress the issue, because, as I said, it may be a use that doesn't require nearly as many as 11 spots, and then...
Would you commit to paying whatever that is, depending on what that number is? So assume it's nine, you've already agreed that you're gonna pay nine, and assume it's 50, you're gonna pay 50, so then that would kind of make sure that your decision is swayed by that a little bit more, too.
In other words, we keep this part of it open until we know actually what the use is.
So, yeah, we're gonna be committed to what we are currently on, the other one depend on, yes, what we're gonna do, and how much, for example, if you're gonna open a deli or barber shop, depend on the chairs, yes, we can be committed to whatever.
Mr. Bello, would our approval, like, I'm sorry...
I know you submitted some architectural plans here with the, with the application, have you looked into how, should this be a restaurant or a deli or some sort of public use there in that first floor, how that access would work? Because the front door, you don't have enough room to get anywhere near ADA-compatible in that site, so...
I know that, he's working with an architect on that issue, I've not been involved in it.
So for this issue, we have to get exemption, because there is the front of the thing it doesn't have, and if you're gonna open any business, we'll not allow, you're gonna be in by, to allow us to do it as an apartment, this could be the only way, if, if this is an issue for a business, no business would be, because you have to provide this, the accessibility for any businesses, and because, I think you said every foot, you have to have 10 feet, so for those three feet, you have to have 30 feet, what's, and the house only...
That's what I'm saying, in the current configuration, you would never be able to comply with that.
Yeah, and I think the thought was...
I think that's gonna limit your use that you're gonna be able to put in there, quite frankly.
Yeah, but I think that, that use would be for any use, whether, any business would require that type of ramp that they could never comply with, so that's why they think they're thinking exemption is the way they're gonna go.
Because it's existing and it's a business, I don't know. I think there is some businesses get exemption in this, in Bridgeport, because of the age, and there is no way you can do anything.
Mr. Rosowski, I just want to mention, that was my mistake, I misread a note that I had, it's 25, not 2,000, I just want, I'm sorry, I don't want to leave this meeting without having corrected that, so, there's two versions of it, and 2,500 is the version under your zoning, as I understand it, is that correct?
And technically, that, it doesn't apply to consumer, it only applies to commercial properties, so the two units upstairs, that would have to be a proposal by you to the board.
Okay. So gonna be only for the three?
Well, yeah, I mean, the thing about it is, I just want to be, just, I want to be fair to my client, I mean, the requirement that he has eight spots for the sleep study, which is five per position and one and a half for every employees, is excessive given his use, you know, I think it's fair to say if he charges of three from, for that one, and then two for the upstairs at $2,500 apiece, I think that's fair.
I might agree with you, other than the fact that he has zero, you know, he has zero parking spaces, so...
Two, I think, for this...
No, what do you have now?
Two and two, four.
No, no, how many physical spaces on site?
On site, you don't...
No, no, no.
Yeah, there are none, right? So, we're trying to find a way, given the fact that you have no parking on the site whatsoever, is there a way that council can get comfortable with allowing you to put anything that uses that amount of, that amount of parking spaces in there? And I guess you would be saying to the board, I realize that my sleep center requires X, I'm gonna pay you for those, and I know I don't have to pay you for the residential use, but I'm gonna suggest to the board that we do that as a show of good faith to community parking down the road that may be a benefit to you and everybody else.
I mean, as, sorry to interject, as somebody who doesn't have a vote, but somebody who has a personal stake in this, because it is the block I live on, I can tell you, there is no parking, there, I will say, because it's, I guess, like a wider street on Ford Street, it's a little more flexible, I think, than some of the, you know, like Sixth Street, for example, so I think that Mr. Hale's point of there being not enough parking, I do think it is a big quality of life issue, I think if you found the spots, that, you know, we're all excited to bring new businesses and, and community members into town, but it's hard for me to see, as somebody who looks outside every day and sees people, you know, actively looking for parking when they're, you know, 85 years old and can't park in front of their home, things like that, it's hard for me to see how this works, and I mean, I guess I have a question for council, I know that we're talking about building these lots, are there lots being proposed for around that area? Because I can see how that would make sense, but if they're just, I don't know, if you're asking them to be, to pay the fee for just hoping that there might be parking down the line, like, where does that leave us?
Yeah, I think that a lot of the lots we've seen are not right exactly around there, and like, it could happen, anything could happen, but they would be, and if there's parking that is a block away from a business, that, like a restaurant or other business where people come and go, like, if you have a main street and people park down the street and they walk around to go from business to business, that's understandable, that happens in a lot of places, but when you have a residential property and an apartment, and places where people are gonna be keeping their car all night, that's where things get complicated for me.
And let me muddy the water even more, there's no handicap parking spaces, and, and this is a situation and a use that may generate that particular need.
Which in that general, that means that it's not just a spot, but it has to be a van-accessible spot.
Well, yeah.
Okay, good, that's, and again, you may be saying that, you know, it's not for ser-, but I work with people with disabilities, I know the people are gonna want, there's going to be people who have a van, who are gonna want to park a van, that's going to happen, I don't really foresee that not happening even a little bit, and I think, again, I think your intentions are good, I think you're the kind of person who I would like to see doing things in our town, if it was in another spot, might be really exciting, but I just don't feel comfortable with it myself, given what I know in that area.
Have you been down there on a weekday evening to see if you could find seven open spots?
Four.
Or I think seven was the minimum, right? Three for the sleep center, four, five for the...
What I, we were suggesting is just not worry about the first floor right now, but the sleep study, we would say we do, we need three practically, and upstairs, two for five spots, and I don't know to answer your question, have you gone down there at night to look around to see if...
I go during the day, there's, I mean, some spaces on Ford Street, because Ford Street is a long one on both sides, but I didn't really go in late in evening, I...
That might be something just worth investigating, you know, so you can really get a feel of what it would be like at nighttime, and, you know, if you have three clients, or two clients trying to come in, and an employee, they might not be able to find parking, and that's just something, you know, you really have to consider, so...
Would Borough Council be better suited, and I know this is, everyone has their own opinions here, I was just trying to get some clarity of what we should be doing, if we would go out and try to lease some spots for this that are local, like nearby, that people would walk to, like, say, the two residents and...
I think so.
Is that, is that preferably over than purchasing them?
So I think this is for the residential, the residential, they need spots, the sleep study, we can talk, it's different, right? So that's what I think Mr. Bello just mentioned.
That's where I would, that's where I would land, yeah.
It's a separate conversation from a zoning perspective.
Okay.
Technically, my understanding, based off what Mr. Truman just brought to our attention, is you're not allowed to purchase for residential, you are allowed to purchase for commercial, but that was my misunderstanding when I first explained it to you.
I would certainly be much more amenable to the residential if you were able to find some spots in town to lease, that, that would, you know, relatively nearby, certainly, 100%.
I was gonna, I don't, I don't know the configuration of that building, but have you considered just making the entire downstairs a sleep center with no more than two beds, and putting the apartment on the second floor, and, you know, then you're down to five spaces for the entire structure, but you also have access from both sides, as opposed to putting yourself on the most congested street?
Yeah, we talked about that, and the issue is just so large, I mean, it's a, it's a 4,000-square-foot inside building, you don't need a sleep study 4,000 square, like, you know, just, it doesn't, financially, it doesn't work, and you just cannot justify the costs of doing it all.
If you are just holding off on that, some of that commercial, though, to see what comes up with our municipal parking in the next six, 12 months, and, you know, come back before council, once we have, you know, something in place municipal parking-wise, I, I'm glad you mentioned, you know, leasing some, looking for leasing residential spaces, I would, I would be much, much more comfortable with the idea of that, and then discussing a couple of, a fee in lieu for a few of the commercial sites.
That was a good idea.
I don't know if we can answer that question tonight.
Mr. Bello and Mr. Truman are more than capable, and, you know, they're very, they've heard this song and dance quite, quite a bit, I feel like they know everyone's thoughts to an extent, you're welcome to kind of keep in touch with us that way, in the meantime, because I think you have your meeting coming up, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, I would recommend reaching out to Mr. Bello and Mr. Truman.
So I think as a courtesy to the applicant, we should at least indicate, if we can at this point, or indicate that we can at this point, are going to support, oppose, or stay neutral throughout the process. Yes, we can always do that, but I think, if you're, whatever a majority wants to do tonight, we should, we should vote, we can always change that.
My understanding of stipulations is that you would lease residential, you'd pay in lieu for the commercial, and then you would do nothing with the remainder of space, and whatever you decide to do, you would pay in lieu for that, that is what I would personally be in support of, but I'm happy to hear council's thoughts and comments if they feel they heard the other things as well.
But if the stipulations would then go with, we would be in favor of it.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm...
So I think the fresh-hold question is, are we going to support it, oppose it, or do nothing?
The best I can do is do nothing, I'm not, I, I appreciate those ideas, they're smart ideas, President has it, but I don't feel comfortable.
And we can still have conversation, no matter how the vote goes tonight, and if there's an indication, I can contact Mr. Rosowski and see if he's agreeable to whatever conditions council direct me to pursue.
Could someone open up the floor with a motion? This doesn't mean you're supportive, it just means we start discussing it.
I think it's, Tony, are you making a motion to stay neutral?
I said that's the best I can do.
Anyone want to support?
I didn't make him a crowd, that's the best I can do.
I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Hale to just, Hale, sorry, I don't know why I keep...
So, I'll...
Thank you for the tone, Hale.
Move to stay neutral, Ms. Nolan, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, like, I do like the ideas, and I appreciate you coming, coming in here, but I think that there's still just a lot to discover that's probably over our heads, and I would, I would agree to just stay neutral and let zoning...
I'll second that.
All right, do you have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
To stay neutral. Are there any members that would like to not stay neutral? All right, the motion carries, thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.
I love talking to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosowski, just congratulations, I know I heard through the grapevine that you are retiring soon, so, congrat, it's been a, it's been a...
I was just saying, why you want to do that?
It's been a pleasure working with you over the years.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Congratulations. All right, next up for council consideration, we have authorization to execute payment estimate, estimate number one. Oops, skip, skip, all right, we're going back to engineering, for council consideration, we have the curb cut request for 427 Bush Street. Get some context.
Real quick, members of council, in your packets, you'll find a memorandum from building code official Wanzick recommending approval of this, of this curb cut request, pretty standard fare, applicant wants to, wants to convert the rear of his property that comes in off of an alley into a, into, I believe, two parking spaces for his residence, not uncommon, we've, we've seen these many times over the years, and this one does not pose any unique impediments.
I would move to support the request.
Second.
All right, we have two motions, do you have any questions or comments from council of the public?
I have a comment, I just, again, like, I'd like to see that our residents are taking charge of their parking issue, and, I mean, again, I appreciate what it takes to have a parking spot, but, again, moving forward, like, when we have businesses that are wanting to come in, like, you know, sometimes these types of things are what's gonna have to happen, so, you know, again, thank you to the residents for kind of taking that into their own hands, so...
Thanks, Mrs. Halk, do you have any?
We can only do so much, so, thank you.
That motion has to be, your salad has to be the minute, so...
Do you have any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That curb cut request is supported.
Well, again, like, it's frustrating, because we want these businesses, but we can't make the earth expand, so in situations like this, where our residents are taking matters into their own hands, I truly appreciate that, because I know how frustrated you can be looking for a parking spot, I wouldn't know, I have a driveway, but other than that, it's nice to see that they're able to do it on their own property.
Sure. All right, coming back to our next item, for council consideration, we have authorization to execute payment estimate number one, Innovative Construction Services for 200,000, 282,877 dollars and 57 cents for the 2025 paving project.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Hale, second from Ms. Halk, do you have any questions or comments from council of the public?
Brief comment, Roger, I believe this, this payment constitutes the lion's share of the contracted cost with just retainage being held back.
It does, there's a retainage of $14,888 that'll be withheld, there are several punch list items that the contractor is scheduled to address on Friday, weather permitting, so hopefully that'll be taken care of in the next week or so.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Do we have any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-11, creating a bank account for Booport event finances, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Halk, a second from Ms. Gundrum, do we have any questions or comments from council of the public?
All on board, just, you know, so we have something for the record for folks that are watching, so we, last year we took some money in, obviously we put some money out, sponsorships and expenses, we're doing that again this year, probably bigger, probably better, and we're just looking for this as a best practices action.
Mr. Truman recommended it, so I'll let him.
Given, given, given the early influx of donations and their, and their sizes, I've felt it important to begin keeping those funds segregated from the rest of our operating expenses, much like we do with the holiday toy account, or the hunger drive, other, other things of that, the Founder's Day, Founder's Day has its own account at this juncture, so.
It's the right call, cool, thanks. This was in the event, a huge success again.
Do we have any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. For council consideration, we have Resolution 2025-12, authorization, authorizing participation with Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust to establish a certificate of deposit account for liquid fuel funds.
Just as a quick, quick synopsis on this one, folks, we have about $350,000 in our liquid fuels account, which is state given grant money, not grant money, but state given allocation money, that is earmarked specifically for street-related construction, maintenance, equipment purchases, so on and so forth. We will not spend anywhere near that much money between now and the end of the calendar year. The plan is to keep 100,000, about $100,000 liquid in the liquid fuels account for, to transact between now and the end of the year, and invest a quarter million dollars of the surplus liquid fuels money into a CD that matures every 90 to 120 days, depending on what has the better interest rate, to, to get some better return on investment. This is being done through Pliggett, the Pennsylvania Local Government Insurance Trust, Investment Trust, rather. In short, for, we deposit about a quarter million dollars, and every 90 or 120 days, again, depending on applying current interest rates, we'd be getting back about $3,000 to $3,500 every three or four months on that, so, nice little return on investment for the, for money that we aren't doing anything with. And, yeah, I thank Angela Long for, for doing the footwork on this, and getting it put together for us.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, love new money.
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Shank, second from Ms. Nolan, do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We can move on to unfinished business, are there any items of unfinished business anyone would like to discuss? All right, seeing there's none, we can move on to committee reports, are there any committee reports?
Just say real quick, for the Community Events Committee, this Saturday, we do have our next movie night, family movie night here at the Bridgeport parking lot here, will be The Wild Robot, featuring the voice talents of Pedro Pascal and Mark Hamill, and personal favorite of mine, Matt Berry, so it will be fun for children and adults alike. I have no idea what the movie is about, but it looks awesome, and I'm sure everybody with children know what's going to go on, so I will see you there, I'll be slinging some popcorn for you all.
Any other committee reports? The Booport Committee met recently and discussed our upcoming plans, we are wrapping up with fundraising and are moving on into a phase of reaching out to businesses to figure out what the events are going to look like. Last year, as a reminder, we had 42 events, 40 of them are completely free to the residents and beyond, so we'd like to replicate that, maybe double it, we'll see. We have lots of businesses that are very interested in joining us, but if you are a business in town, and would like to participate in the events portion, please reach out to us, if you'd like to be a part of the marketing piece as well, feel free to reach out to us, and as always, if you want to just volunteer, and you're a resident, or not, feel free to join us and make some new friends, and be a part of the spookiest town in Montgomery County's planning. All right, we can move on to the mayor's report, Mayor Jack Seere.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder that my office is hosting a diaper drive in support of local charity Mitzvah Circle throughout the month of June, so if you'd like to participate in helping local parents in need, please drop off unopened packs of diapers and wipes at our two participating locations, right here at Bridgeport Borough Hall and Frosty Falls during their open hours, so if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out, and if you are interested in hosting a meeting with me this month, please note that office hours will be by appointment, so please reach out if you would like to have a meeting. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jack Seere. Move on to the chief's report, chief.
Good evening, Bridgeport, just wanted to shout out to the Upper Marine and Baseball Association's winner, the champions are the Cardinals, I met them at Dino's today, posted a picture of them, so congratulations to the Cardinals, I thought they should have been the Vikings, but I was corrected, they're the Cardinals, it's hard to say Upper Marine Cardinals, but they did. I met up with the Iverson family and DeeDee over at Wawa this morning, with a bunch of children that are out because of, I guess, different school schedules, and everyone's getting excited for the carnival, and for a nice summer, and the carnival's a great, a great start for it. So I also posted about the carnival traffic patterns, you're going to see bright orange signage, electronic signs that are going to say what roads are going to be closed, which hours, on what days, and redirecting traffic, so that we can get the traffic flow naturally moving in those directions that people want to cut through town, and not wait until the last second, when the actual closures actually occur. And those closures are going to be between Depot and Mill Streets on West Fourth Street, so any of the people that want to cut through, the normal cut-throughs in the evenings, after 5:00, Tuesday through Thursday at least, is to take the Depot Street to Front Street, over to Norris Town, or to go up Ford Street to DeKalb, and go straight down to Kalb Street. And inverted, if you're going to be coming or going east from there, you may not want to come down Fourth Street at all, you might want to continue to go up to Fourth Street, or make another, take another route over to go east on State Route 23 into Swedlin and West Conshie and Conshiehockin. So just pay attention to those signages, and please give due courtesy to the, the crossing guards that are going to be up on Mill Street, and the, the fire police that are going to be shutting down roadways, just be attentive to that. One other thing for the carnival, is that we put out signs in the past, no bicycles on the property, there is a lot of pedestrians, and with a lot of pedestrians, it doesn't take much for someone to get injured, so we ask everybody, keep your bikes at home, or if you're going to have your bikes, lock them to a pole someplace off the borough property, where they can stay secured, and it keeps the, the event safe for all the children, the elderly, and everyone else in between. So please, please pay attention to that, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, chief. All right, we can move on to new business, do we have any items of new business to discuss? All right, we can move on to open forum and announcements, sounds like Mr. Truman has one.
I do, thank you, Councilwoman Nolan, again, the family movie night is going to be this Saturday night, June 14th, we will be doing free popcorn, and we'll also have free juice packs, like Capri Suns, for the, for the kids, so come on out, I'm sure it'll be a great time. And speaking from experience, The Wild Robot is a very good, very good kids movie. The Bridgeport Carnival is coming back next week, we'll be returning to town from June 17th to the 21st, and with it, we hope our residents will come on out and join us for five more nights of affordable family fun. We have a bunch of, a bunch of different stuff to offer, as, as always, we will have the Beer Garden, hosted by Conchakken Brewery, all five days of the week, we will have the Winery, courtesy of Cardinal Hollow Winery, there on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, we will have live music on the lot, on the other side of the street from Borough Hall, all five nights. Tuesday night, we kick it off with AM radio, coming back for what has to be, I think, the sixth, sixth or seventh year in a row. Tuesday night, June 18th, or, excuse me, Wednesday night, June 18th, we welcome a new band, new to us, but certainly familiar to anybody with the local bar scene, a group called Old School, a, you know, kind of a nostalgia act, 70s and 80s rock. June 19th, we have a group, another new group, we'll be welcoming former strangers to the stage, they are a self-proclaimed party band, and they promise to deliver a non-stop high-energy performance. June 20th, we have Whiskey Grin, the hard-rocking Jersey Trio back with us for the third year in a row, and then Saturday night, we will have the Mighty Manatees, who are also a longtime mainstay on the carnival stage. In addition to the, the live, the live music and the beer and wine garden, Bridgeport Fire Company Number One will be operating their food stand again this year, which was a huge hit last year. And we will have, every night, we will have a different local artist, such as a face painter, a balloon artist, or glitter tattoo artist, every night of the week. On June 17th, Tuesday night, we'll have a face painter, June 18th, Wednesday night, balloon artist, 19th, Thursday night, we'll have glitter tattoos, June 20th, Friday night, we'll have the face painter back, and then June 21st, Saturday, we'll cap it off with the balloon artist coming back. Yes? There's, yes, thank you, and, and those, the, the carnival is not free, that is ticket and wristband based, however, we do bring the, the face painters in and the balloon artists in, free of charge, those are just added value that we like to bring to the kids of Bridgeport. And then Saturday afternoon, we will welcome our local vendors market back, that'll be June 21st, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and the mark, the vendors we have lined up for this year's market are Abiza, a new food truck known as The Coffee Closet will, will be attending, Reach Climbing and Fitness, Junebug Sweet Treats will be bringing her assortment of delicious baked goods, Kids First Swim School, Magic Memories Preschools, and another newcomer known as For Goodness Cakes. So, so, yeah, we have a, we have a nice little eclectic lineup for, for the, the local vendors market this year as well, and, yeah, I mean, I hope we, you know, if it, if it gets too hot, we'll have the sprinkling, sprinkler and misting stations out there for everybody to cool off in, and hope everybody can make it down, so, thank you for, for your time, and one last reminder, June 28th, Saturday, June 28th, again, is going to be the community yide, yide, community-wide yard sale day, where we waive the standard $25 permit fee that it normally costs to host a, host a yard sale. If you register with the borough, which again is for free, we compile a list of all the participating properties, and we will publish that on our website and social media on the Friday prior to the yard sale, so that folks know where all the deals and steals may be found, so, that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
We're gonna, the fried dough will be at the firehouse at the carnival.
I mean, I told them they weren't allowed to open this.
I heard, and I heard if you, if you can eat 10 fried dough servings, your 11th is free. I just made that up, but I'm hoping for it.
You, you take that up with Kenny Frymore.
Thank you, Mr. Truman.
I'm sure there's some sort of participation trophy or something, if you can, if you can get 10 of those fried doughs down in one sitting.
I have, I have a quick announcement, just wanted to congratulate one of our Bridgeport residents, Mr. Anthony Swenda, he is with the LSU Shippensburg baseball team, they have a record-breaking, history-making season with the first NAIA title, I spoke to his mom this week, she's very excited, the family's very excited, and obviously Bridgeport is as well, we were really hoping to celebrate him at the next River Market, but he got signed, which I'm not mad about, I'm very excited to hear, I'm sure they want to announce more about it, but, yeah, very proud of him, looking forward to him coming back in September, and we will certainly do something for him then, to, to welcome him home, but, yeah, he was here one day and gone exactly the next, off to bigger, better things, so very excited, just wanted to make sure that we got a moment to congratulate him and wish him well in his next steps.
Are there any additional announcements? All right, we can move on to public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to comment this evening? All right, seeing there's none, we can certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
It is 8:42, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody.